Number seven, Friendswood City Council meeting and announced that we have a quorum. Tonight's invocation will be led by Friendswood City Manager Murad Kabiri. Please, could you all stand for this and then remain standing and we'll say the pledges?
Please bow with me. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to gather with one another to conduct the business of our wonderful city. We pray that you're with us this evening, guide our thoughts, our words, and our actions, that they may be for the betterment of this community. We pray you watch over us and bless this community in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas. One state, under God, one and indivisible.
You guys were so great, we all forgot to listen.
Great job. All right. Item four is council for a day. Consider a proclamation declaring November eighth, 2022 as Westwood Elementary School Day in the city of Friendswood, Texas. Now, I'm going to call you all up individually. I'm going to introduce you and you're going to come up and take your place, you second graders. First, I want to remind everybody, you know, this is the fourth year that we've done this. We started in 2018 and we'd done four school years. We took one school year off because of COVID unfortunately, but this is the fourth year that we have done this. And, you know, we, we see it as an opportunity for these students to see a little bit about how our government works. You know, for those of you that just walked in, we had a little Q and A session with the students and we talked a little bit about how our government works and they had some great questions for us. We want them to understand the value of community service and know that all of us that serve here on city council as mayor and city council members are volunteers. We don't get paid. We do this because we all want to give back something to the community. And, you know, volunteerism is a very strong thing in Friendswood. We, we have a city that's basically based on volunteerism. So, we are doing that. It also fosters leadership development. You know, we all know up here that some of you all that are going to be taking our seats here in a few minutes in the future will probably one day serve on either a committee or on city council or maybe even as the mayor of Friendswood. So, we want to give you that introduction to what, what goes on here so that you can think about that in the future. And then we also want to, you know, support FISD's character education program. So, very important to us that we, you know, are in lockstep with FISD on that, on that sort of thing. So, I'm here, I'll start over on this end. First, I'll introduce our city secretary. Playing our city secretary tonight is Letty Brish. Letty actually is not a second grader. She is our city secretary. So, thank you for being here, Letty. Councilman, member position six is Ryan Inman. Come on up here, Ryan. Ryan's teacher is, you're going to come right up here to this seat right here. This guy that you're about the same height as, that's council member Aaron.
What?
Well, I was going to tell him to aspire for more than just mayor of Friendswood. Same body powers.
So, Ryan's teacher is Pamela Koots. How many of y'all teachers have done this before now? Most of you have been here before. Thank you all for coming. Councilmember position five, Lila Lifewal. And Lila's teacher is Leia Trahan. Councilmember position four, Emma Idroggo. Her teacher is Madeline Owen.
You've got my seat.
The mayor is Kylie Palomo. Kylie's teacher is Melissa Comer. Councilmember position three, Isa Khan. Teacher is Darian Register. Councilmember position two, Robert McCray. His teacher is Teresa Waltonbaugh. Councilmember position one, Hunter Foley. Her teacher is Kelly Rye. Our city attorney is Gabe Johnson. Gabe's teacher is Lexi Compton. And Gabe's grandfather is Don Johnson. All right, yeah. This man. And Leia's fa- Leia's father is a Friendswood police officer.
That'd be true.
Oh, yeah.
So, can you imagine that she might have a favor? Do you have a favor?
Go ahead and make a, make a motion to give a break.
So, we're going to start. I want you to make sure that you can, that you're speaking into the microphone because we want to be able to hear you, okay? Everybody have their script? It looks like this.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, before you have a proposed resolution declaring November eighth, and which is tomorrow, 2022, as Westwood Elementary Day here in Friendswood, Texas. As you know, Westwood Elementary is part of the Friendswood Independent School District and is an exemplary campus and a source of pride for our community.
Has our city attorney approved the wording of our proposed proclamation?
I have drafted the wording of the proposed proclamation and it is in line with the vision statement of the city of Friendswood.
Will our city secretary please read the city's vision statement for the record?
The city of Friendswood has the following statement as, as its vision. Together we build our future in a friendly place to live, work, play, learn, and worship.
I will now read the proposed proclamation. A proposed proclamation of the city of Friendswood, Texas declaring November eighth, 2022 as Westwood Elementary Day in the city of Friendswood, Texas. It is now time to take a vote. Do I have motion to accept the proposed proclamation?
I move to accept the proposed proclamation as presented.
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
At Westwood Elementary, we pledge to be kids with character and we pledge to be bucket fillers.
At Westwood Elementary, we will be honest, reliable, and worthy of trust.
We will be responsible and fair doing what we must.
At Westwood Elementary, with our words and our actions, we will show that we care.
We will be good citizens and do our share.
At Westwood Elementary, we, we will respect ourselves and others too.
We will expect the best in all we do.
Would the city secretary please read the motion on the table?
We have a motion by council member Hunter Foley and a second from council member Robert McCray to accept a proposed proclamation of the city of Friendswood, Texas, declaring November eighth, 2022 as Westwood Elementary Day in the city of Friendswood, Texas.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed, please raise your hands. Motion passes seven to zero. Congratulations, Westwood Elementary School, this is council for a day meeting has now adjourned.
Your council member is going to stand behind you and they're going to take a picture of you guys, okay?
Good job, Kylie.
Go ahead and stand up so that we can see you.
Stand up, Kylie.
Can you see them? Yes. Let's take a picture.
I forgot to introduce our city manager, Murad Kabiri, playing city manager. And I should have introduced principal Moffett is here as well. Thanks for being here, Kristy. The assistant principal was here. Lee, did he have to run out? Well, now, I'm going to call, you could call a recess and we'll go out in a foyer and eat cookies and have some punch for a couple of minutes.
You say, you say, we're going to take a, we're going to take a recess.
Yeah, we're going to take a recess. All right, item five, council comments and reports. I'd like to, I'll start off this, this month and say, I want to thank council member Hanks for getting us involved in a human trafficking event over in Lone Star Flight Museum. Let the door close here and quiet down a little bit. She, she worked on a committee that put together a, an event that educated us all about human trafficking and it was very educational, very informative, very worthwhile to go and listen to law enforcement and folks that are dealing with that. And we're a little bit blessed here in Friendswood that we don't deal with human trafficking coming through Friendswood, but it is rampant in the city of Houston, we found out. And so, it was good, a good event. So, thank you, Trish. I just wanted to give you credit for working on that and getting us involved. So, you want to go next?
Sure. So, I attended a Keep Friendswood Beautiful meeting this week and this coming weekend is Fall Hall and they're geared up to help out with the garage sale and the, and the tree, not the tree giveaway, but the, the, just taking the stuff.
Taking everybody's junk from.
Shred.
Yeah, shredding stuff and all. Those people are hard workers and I want to give them a shout out. And that human trafficking awareness seminar, I didn't know that Houston was the number one city in the country. Sometimes we're number two, but we always think it's just coming, you know, it's just in a subsection of the population and, and coming from the border, but it's, it was actually the Houston Airport Association that spearheaded this and put it on because it's happening at all ages and, and it's happening right underneath our noses and it's like we don't really even understand or realize what's going on. So, it was a very informative and well-attended event. Thank you, thank you, mayor, for coming and being one of the dignitaries.
Councilmember Branson?
So, a couple of things. CEDC is actually going to be hosting, I'm not quite sure we're going to call it like a consortium, but we're reaching out to members of FD EDC and the chamber and they're going to have a meeting, a combined meeting to kind of share ideas on what each one is doing with regard to economic development in our community. And I think it's really given me a great opportunity. Stephen Ray is, is the one who's organizing that, so thank you very much, Stephen, for doing that. I think it's a great concept and I'm excited to hear what comes out of that. Also, I'd like to thank Letty and her team. We actually had a regional transportation update for 2045 hosted at the library. Thank you, Matt, again, for opening up your library, very well attended. I think they had over 30 residents who came and it was a Bexoria-Galveston County meeting. There's, it was a third of, I believe we're going to have eight total. So, I know it sounds a long way out, but transportation, kind of like flooding, takes a while to get all these pieces into place. So, I just wanted to say thank you to Letty and her team for organizing that and Matt for hosting us. And the mayor did come. Thank you, mayor, for showing up for that too. All right, you're a busy man.
Well, I got nothing else to do. Councilmember Rocky?
I have a couple of things from the library. The Cadenza String Ensemble is going to play Thursday night, November 17th at 7:00 PM. And this is a group of area students, elementary through high school, and they're going to perform classical music at the library. And if you happen to be somebody that came to Histerween, they were the string quartet that played in the cemetery. So, they're really actually pretty good. Friends of the Library is having their annual book sale, December 1st through the 3rd. You can buy boxes of books for five bucks or 10 bucks, depending on the size. All the money goes to the Friends of the Friendswood Library. And while the crowd that probably would have cared about this has left, Santa will be at the library on Monday, December 5th from 6:00 PM to 7:30. And, and as I mentioned, we had our annual Histerween and I wanted to thank Brent Aaron Wirt for playing one of the parts in the cemetery and, and his daughters also helping out. So, and so it, it went well. So, thank you.
So, Santa Claus is December 5th?
He's coming to town.
He likes Friendswood a lot, so he'll be back multiple times in different locations.
We have a council meeting. How are we supposed to go?
Well, you know, you'll have to skip it.
There is another chance to see Santa on December the 6th.
I just wanted, I wanted to mention, well, tomorrow is the last day to vote. So, if you've not voted, go out and exercise your right. A lot of people fought and died for that right, for you to choose who governs you. So, it's very important. Get out and vote.
At the chamber or at the?
Yeah, at the Chamber of Commerce or Green Event.
Center tomorrow for the Galveston County residents. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Councilmember Graffon?
Yes, if you're a veteran.
Pardon me?
Just right here.
It's right across the board here.
Yeah. But he, he, he mentioned, but also our veterans, they'll be honoring our veterans at the Senior Activities Center, November the 14th to 11th for one, for a luncheon, if you want to come. It's always a wonderful time to see the veterans get out there on that particular day. And other than that, I don't really think I have any, oh, well, I think on that same day, on November the 14th at the library, the council members who wish to will be reading Christmas stories to the kids again. So, I always enjoy doing that, so I'll be there.
December, sir.
December?
December, December 14th, you will be reading the Christmas stories.
Okay, it's not November 14th?
No. Your calendar is, is December.
I'll make that change.
Yes, sir.
The numbers, the numbers are the same, but the name of the month.
It's a bit far away.
Councilmember Aaron Wirt, got anything? I just, I was, I, I left out Gina Hunt, very important piece of the human trafficking event, our crime victim liaison. So, chief, please pass along to Gina. It was great to see her out there and I know she is a great advocate for our victims here. Thank you. All right, on to item six, public comment. In order to comply with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate any item not listed on the agenda. As such, the city council will listen to public comment and may, one, refer such item to city management for further action, or two, direct staff for the placement of said item on a future agenda. During public comment, the public shall comply with rules of decorum. I like that shortened version. So, no cussing, no whistling, none of that. All right. David Allen. First up.
That was wonderful with the, with the Westwood students there. And, and you know, after they pledge allegiance in their class to the United States flag and the Texas flag, and again, growing up in New Jersey, I'd never remember pledging allegiance to the New Jersey flag, so it is a wonderful thing to do that here in Texas. They also pledge their honor to each other to treat each other responsibly and it's really quite something. I don't know, this clock's not working, I don't know, but, but. No, I don't think it means it. I do use it, I do try to finish on that. Okay, so today we're talking with the children, you know, about the form of government that we have where we have some input, kind of like this, and we're, we have not just a, you know, a, 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 a city organ of some national dictatorship, you know, or something like that. So, we have a lot of self-government here. Thomas Jefferson, who wrote the Declaration of Independence, a couple of things about that. So, if you, if you Google the first rough draft of the Declaration, sometimes it's called the first rough draught, D-R-A-U-G-H, of the Declaration, you'll see that the first had in the place where we went all over the reasons why we wanted to leave with the king here, what he was doing to us. The biggest paragraph was actually dropped out in the final version and it was against slavery and it was written by Thomas Jefferson. And, and, and in fact, it, it talked about how the, the king, and I verified this later, George Otto Trevillian was a, actually a House of Lords member in the late 1800s. George Otto Trevillian, the American Revolution. You can get his book for just a couple of bucks, it's just absolutely wonderful. And he, according to my former boss, who was a British submarine guy, the House of Lords has access to the king's papers. So, in the George Otto Trevillian history of the American Revolution, he showed that indeed what it said in that long paragraph, the biggest paragraph of reasons why we should leave in Thomas Jefferson's first rough draft of the Declaration, was that the king, when a lot of states were putting huge taxes on the slave trade so that it would stop, you know, like a thousand dollars a head or whatever would really make people stop in those days. And the king would say, no, I make money on each one of those sales, you're not going to have that tax on it. You know, I thought he was just trying to make the king look extra bad, but it was true, according to that House of Lords member, George Otto Trevillian, a good book to get. And then so, Thomas Jefferson, he graduated, you know, he was landed, his father died at age 17, he had a plantation, okay, went to college, got, got a degree, became a lawyer, became a member of the House of Burgesses, the House versus the Senate there in the state of Virginia. His first bill, he was too young to introduce, he had to be 30, so he got a friend who was 30 and they introduced a bill to end slavery in Virginia. I didn't know this till I was over 60. How come? I don't know. And it was, and of course was, he said he was hooted down and his, he has a short autobiography you can get online, but because he couldn't do it legislatively, and that would have been a wonderful example and would have avoided the Civil War, he, in the intervening years before he wrote the Declaration, worked for free to free black people that, you know, had, had a reason to be legally free and he did that work for free. So, he was an amazing guy. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Johnson? Is the timer working?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Timer's working. You're on the clock.
Not for everybody, but for you.
But for me. Okay. Well, as you know, I have a lot to say about the Subsidence District and flooding, but you'll be glad to hear, I intend to only provide a very abbreviated version of everything tonight. And what y'all should have up there is a, is a new folder that we're, a handout that we're, we're providing and I'm really rather proud of this. This sort of evolved from some requests we had to provide presentations and from all the questions I've heard over the last couple of years, this kind of summarizes at a high level. It doesn't get down into the nuts and the bolts, but it gives everybody a pretty good, good explanation at a high level. What is the Subsidence District? You know, what's happening and, and why is it needed? Also, on the inside cover, there's a, a page in here, which is a, a custom pumpage report that only a few Galveston County entities get. That's something I actually developed with staff because of the questions we had from people, well, how much water are we pumping? How much are we allowed? How much are our permit fees? And like for Friendswood, it not only shows you your permit fees, it shows you how much you, you've got back. And so, you've got back more than 90% of your fees because you turned in a rebate request, which we pioneered a few years ago. And by the way, it's about time to turn that rebate request in again. You've got until December 31st, but you don't want to probably wait till the last minute with something like that. And so, anyway, I just want to make sure you had this and if you ever want the full-blown presentation, you know, we'll be glad to come back and do it. And if I've got a second left, I wanted to, to thank the city of Friendswood for taking the lead at pushing through the inter-local agreement with Harris County and Galveston County and everybody for the FM 1959 Stormwater Detention Basin. I, I think that's going to be a big plus and it's not the be-all, end-all answer, but it's one of those major components that we've, we've needed for a long time. Now, a little bit further downstream, you know, if, if we can get the other pieces put into place, I think we'll significantly protect a lot of residents of Friendswood from flooding if we can get that $10 million grant from the state. And if there's anything I can do, I know a lot of state officials and go up there a lot, I'll be certainly happy to lobby for that, once we get to a point where we know exactly what it is we want them to do. Well, if anybody has any questions on any, on any of this stuff at any time, you know, feel free to give me a call. I'm, I'm always happy to talk to everybody. Thanks, Don.
Sure. Y'all have a good evening.
Mike Unbehagen? How badly did I?
Hello, how y'all doing this evening?
Could you repeat your name? I probably butchered.
Mike Unbehagen.
Oh, that's what I said.
Mayor, city council, thank y'all for allowing me to have a moment here. I'm the owner of Unbehagen Construction, Tucan LLC. I'm a resident of Friendswood, new resident and glad to be here, been enjoying our time. I'm also a third-generation contractor, general contractor. Been providing services in Galveston, Galveston County, surrounding counties for well over 70 years. So, I've got a long history of construction. I'm addressing the council regarding agenda item 9D for the recommendation to award a contract for the Black Hawk Facility Renovation Project. My company is one of several that submitted bid proposal for the Black Hawk Facility Renovation Project. At the time of the bid opening, my company was the lowest bidder by $1,081 on the base bid amount of $3,724,119. Incredibly tight bid. And on the alternate combined with the base bid, my company was low by $53,443. Again, incredibly tight for that large of a job. The proposal request documents have a selection criteria and state that a short list of proposers would be developed for interviews. As of the day, I've not been contacted for an interview. As the lowest cost bidder, I should have been included in the interview process and given an opportunity to answer any questions this selection committee may have had. Today's agenda item 9D includes a recommendation to award a contract to the second bidder and I respectfully request that the council's decision be postponed to allow unbehaved construction to be considered and reviewed, interviewed for the project. It also allows time for the review of the selection documents in process that was performed. This would also result potentially in a savings to the city in money. And I think if I'm given an opportunity to be interviewed, they will see my qualifications would meet and exceed the selected bidder. And with that, respectfully request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Hera Albe. Hera. Sorry, that's my fault. I should have put my glasses.
Totally good, it's not a usual name.
Hera.
Birth name is Brenton Dietrich. Al Dietrich's my grandfather over in Alvin. Hubertan Moore is my mother's older sister. Recently moved from Alvin over to here, not a stranger by no means, spent most of my summers picking in the fig farms and everything else around here, the pears especially. Was injured in Alvin, had a horrific injury at my property and wife and family decided to move over here. It was kind of a tough move because it was a family splot. Saying all that to say, I'm a Marine, veteran, retired, honorable discharge, master plumber, min sails, love the town, love everything about Friendswood. You know, you walk around, you, you kind of feel proud as you see the parks and all of the, the wonderful stuff. I say all that to, to say that I've come across some information that just really disheartened me, you know, when I come from a military background, parents, grandparents, Silver Star, heart, there's a lot of dedication when you say a pledge of allegiance to these flags, that they stand for rules, regulations, laws that are tied to them, that you go literally kicking somebody's door across the country and force those laws upon them. So, they have to be very well thought out, thought over, supreme law of the land, right? Which is what we say a pledge of allegiance to this thing, you know, and the veterans that I hang around with, they take that very seriously. You know, I don't know if this is not something that they relatively know, but the officials over here take a third oath, you know, to the. but the officials over here take a third oath, you know, to the municipality, which nullifies everything that that stands for. That's, I mean, that was, that brought tears to my eyes legitimately. I'm not here to cause any trouble, by no means. I don't want any marketing trying to blow this out of proportion or anything else, but you know, anytime this is brought up, anytime other ways it'd be brought up as treason, a traitor legitimately. Those veterans, y'all's memorial over there is beautiful, okay? It stands for something. You have a drop-off for the flag. You don't have a drop-off for the Friendswood flag. I'm sorry, it's a beautiful town, it's a beautiful city, but you don't have a drop-off for the Friendswood flag. You don't even have a drop-off for the Texas flag because you're only supposed to have that as the Supreme law. So I say all that because nobody knows here, they don't even buy about the right to travel, anything about the Constitution, none of this. The court's not even bonded. The court's not bonded. He can rubber stamp, put my butt in jail and not even be out any money. That's, it's very much discourting, and I think it needs to be brought up. I believe I brought up Ms. Horner, the Clairefield doctrine, you know, and I was waiting on a response, and that's my time. But I love you all, seriously.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item seven, work session topics. A, receive and discuss an update regarding utility rates. Presentation by Director of Administrative Services, Katina Hampton.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We have a utility workshop discussion on tonight's agenda. As you may recall, this has been an ongoing discussion. Last month, we talked about the overall water improvements that the city is in need of over the next few, or I say several years. And this is a continuation of that discussion to talk about our rates.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
We don't, do we have it in the backup material? Hold on one second, I'll... Do not. Yes, I'll do this.
As we load that, we'll just, I'll move through our agenda for this section of the, for this section of the agenda. We'll talk about the utility rates. We'll do a comparison of the, of our utility bills compared to our immediate neighboring cities. We'll also take a look at our historical water and sewer revenue and expenditures. We'll also take a look at the automated meter infrastructure project that we have ongoing. And then we'll talk about our next steps and what's next for the city.
I apologize for that. There we go.
All right. Looking at our immediate neighboring cities, we wanted to look at those one at a time, mainly for a vision, you know, like for us to be able to see the data that is present. Looking at each of the next few slides, comparing our utility bills and our rates to our immediate neighboring cities. Each of the comparisons shows a one-inch, what a bimonthly bill would be on a one-inch meter using our citywide average of about twenty thousand gallons on a bimonthly bill, or ten thousand gallons per billing. We'll begin our comparison with the city of Pearland. Like Friendswood, Pearland's rates include a minimum, a minimum charge. And then also it compares or has a consumption charge based on tiers in its per thousand gallons. As you can see, the city of Pearland, if they were to bimonthly bill, they're a monthly billing. But if they were to bimonthly bill as we do, their bimonthly bill would be about three hundred ninety-eight dollars, sixty-two cents, so almost four hundred dollars compared to the city of Friendswood's two hundred and twenty-six dollar bimonthly bill. That's almost seventy-six percent more. Moving on to Leek City. I will mention too that here on this slide, the rate details are a little bit different than what is, what's reflected here. So that bimonthly bill, when I looked at that and did the comparison, their bimonthly bill is actually about two hundred and seventy-eight dollars, ninety-seven cents, so almost two hundred and eighty dollars compared to our two hundred and twenty-six dollar billing. That's about twenty-three percent more than our bimonthly bill. Looking at the city of Alvin, their, their base charge actually includes a couple of additional fees that our city does not, does not include. There's a groundwater district fee as well as the TCEQ fee that's included in their base charge for their water. And then they also have a tiered consumption rate charge per thousand gallons as we do. If they were to bimonthly bill, their bill would be about two hundred and eighty-nine dollars compared to our two hundred and twenty-six dollar bill, or twenty-seven percent more. City of Webster, looking at this. City of Webster is actually the only one of our immediate neighboring cities that has a lower utility bill, if we were to look at it bimonthly, than the city of Friendswood. They also have a minimum rate charge, and it is based on water meter size as ours. And then they have tiered consumption based on a thousand gallons per, per thousand gallons. Their bimonthly bill would be just under two hundred dollars per, for a two-month bill compared to our two hundred and twenty-six dollar bill, so about thirty dollars more. We wanted to take a look at our historical utility revenue and expenditures. The utility rates that we charge, it's an enterprise fund, so it's self-supporting. So the rates that we charge for the utilities supports the city's utility operations. This is the salary and wages for our public work staff, our utility billing staff. It also includes some administrative transfers to the general fund. So there, those rates support the city's utility, the infrastructure, capital improvements, the debt service that is related to capital projects related to utilities. So we'll take a look at the water utilities, revenue and expenditures first. As you can see, this is a historical look back six years as well as our year-to-date unaudited numbers. And I say that because we're still going through the closeout of this fiscal year and also the comparison of our adopted budget in that very last column. As you can see, on our water side, we have, we have a net gain in all of the years reflected here. But on the next slide, you'll see that for the last few years historically, our water utility side has been supplementing our sewer side. So as we did our utility rate study, that's why we had the increase in our utility rates related to sewer. We saw a larger jump in those utility rate changes than we saw on the water side. And that was because for years, water was supplementing sewer, our sewer operation. So on our next slide.
Really big number there, Katina, sewer operations this year, six million. That's kind of way out of family with the rest of the years. What changed this year on our?
We actually had, this was, this actually included some prior year encumbrances for some of those large operational expenditures. We had increases on our, for several of those contracts, for our wastewater treatment plant, as well as purchased water was more this year than we had seen. So some of those contractual obligations that are in our operational expenses, we saw increases there.
So, and to elaborate a little bit more on Katina's comments, we are part of a regional partnership with three other entities in our Gulf Coast wastewater disposal, the Black Hawk facility there on Bay Area Boulevard. We have a capacity within that plant of roughly fifty-six percent of the capacity in the plant. However, we're billed as, based on the actual volume of water that goes through there. So being an older system, during heavy rainfall events, the wastewater treatment plant is inundated. So even though we have fifty-six percent capacity in the plant, we will be billed two-thirds of the operational cost that month if we actually sent that much water through the system.
And we're still trying to find those incursions?
Yes, sir.
And it's our leaks where we're taking rainwater into the sewer?
We are, and it's a long process. Obviously, we have thousands upon thousands of miles of old sanitary sewer systems.
We're going to our next slide. Wanted to just talk briefly about some of those key drivers for our utility costs as well as our, those rate drivers. What we're seeing, as we just mentioned, some of those contractual obligations with the city of Houston and those other partnerships that we're seeing, those costs are increasing. We're also seeing an inflationary factor on just the cost of doing business there. On the utility capital improvement side, our five-year planning, our five-year planning window has in excess of forty million dollars in utility projects within the next five years that we anticipate or hope to be able to complete. And then beyond that five-year window, there's another forty-five million or more. And then again, we're relating, we have an inflationary factor on that. And we have to remember too, that when those projects are initially set in motion or we're looking in the planning phases, by the time we're actually ready to do that work, the cost of those projects sometimes is greater than we had anticipated on the front end of that. Just briefly, back, let's see. Briefly, we want to talk about our automated meter infrastructure project. As we mentioned, we started this project, oh my gosh, we started planning for it or talking about it years and years ago. It was in our multi-year financial plan, I believe, when I started working here at the city fifteen years ago. And it has taken us until now to actually move forward and get that done. As of October 25th, we were about, almost ninety-five percent complete on the meter installation and having that. So our goal is to complete that project by the end of December. We do have some work orders that our public works crews are working through. As the meter change-out program was moving through, we had some meters that we had to move out of sidewalks. We had tree roots in some of those meter boxes. So they have been working diligently to get those cleared out so that we can complete the project. So we've got less than a thousand, I believe, less than a thousand meters to go. So we are almost, almost there. Our goal is to have that completed by December. The Neptune 360 is the city portal, which is our back-facing portal. That's what we will be using to pull in the meter readings from the towers and do our monthly or bimonthly billing process that we use. So that's the data that will be coming in to us and our staff to generate the bills. And then the Water Smart self-service customer portal is the external facing. So this is what the customers will be able to log in and, and see their usage, their consumption. They'll be able to set alerts for their water use. And it has opportunity for them to be able to see or have indicators of leaks that they may need to address. We have an internal pilot program going on now that started last month in October. And we plan to run that through the remainder of November with internal staff and just testing that out before we roll it out to the general public. And December is our goal for that, once we have all the meters installed. And moving on to what's next for us. Our city manager has tasked us with exploring the possibility of transitioning, transitioning from a bimonthly utility billing to a monthly billing. And so we're exploring that. We do anticipate that there will be savings from the current meter reading service because we'll be able to pull those meter readings in from those towers that are part of the AMI project. So there will be some savings there that would help offset if we were to transition to a monthly billing. It would offset those postage costs, the printing costs for generating those bills. But do want to say that transitioning to a monthly billing, it is labor-intensive because right now, we bill two, we bill two cycles each month. We'd be billing all four of our billing cycles pretty much. And then we'd have the disconnections, reconnections, those type of things that would also increase because we'd be billing the whole city each month. And so those are things that we're exploring as of right now. Our engineering department is working on the capital improvement plan update. And this would identify projects that need to, to be done for our utilities as well as estimated cost and prioritizing those, those projects. So moving forward, that forty million dollars in projects and forty-five million dollars in projects beyond that, that five-year window would, are the things that they're looking at in that update. And then we'd also, as we near the end of our five, our current five-year utility rate recommendations from our 2018, I believe 2018 was when we completed our last cost of study, a cost of service and utility study. So we're nearing the end of that. We need to look at doing the next rate study just to make sure that our rates are adequate to cover the operational cost related to the utility, to the city's utilities as well as any capital needs and our debt service obligations related to the utilities.
And Mayor, going back to your earlier question, our Public Works Director reminded me, the jump from the previous year to this past year's sewage operational cost. You may recall, we had purchased capacity or agreed to purchase capacity from the city of Houston as they didn't see a need for all the capacity they had in the plant. And this past fiscal year included purchases of that capacity, which was accounted for as an operational expenditure.
Thank you.
Will that continue then, Matt?
To the extent that we have budget funds to cover it. Unlike property taxes, utility revenue, both on the water and sewer side, is not constant. We can set a rate, but it's based on consumption. So if fewer gallons of water are utilized, then we get fewer revenues. But our costs are set. So the capital expenditures for the projects that have already been built, the debt service associated with it, those are set. The operational costs that we pay the outside parties, these aren't outrun internally by city staff. They're run by Gulf Coast Authority and for our water plant by the city of Houston. Those costs are outside of our control. So if the revenues don't cover those costs, then obviously, then we have a deficit.
Were there any other questions for us?
I will, I will go ahead and, Councilman, sorry.
Well, I was going to comment on the Water Smart, Katina knows it. So I was part of the pilot program, and being an engineer, I checked that app every day. And what I found was that on days that the sprinklers didn't run, it's just two of us at the house, that we were using like a hundred and fifty gallons a day. But on the three days a week the sprinklers ran, we were using two thousand gallons. And you can, and the app will not only tell you by day, but you can break it down by the hour. And I, and I, I went and looked, and I did my little old engineering calculations and realized, you know, I only had it, I have a big yard, and I understand that, but my wife has lots of gardens. But what I found when I investigated it was that back in the spring, when I had some work on the sprinklers, the technician had added another time. So basically, my sprinklers were turning on at one in the morning, running for like an hour and a half, turning off, and coming right back on again at three o'clock and running for another hour and a half. And while Mo jogs by my house and said I had beautiful-looking lawns, it was running way, way too much. It was running double. So I killed the, I killed the, one of the two times, and now it's, and it dropped it by more than half. And so, so I can tell you that when everybody gets on this app, it's really fun, and it's really worth it, and you really will find ways you can, you got water going out that you don't need to use, so.
Thank you, Katina. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think it's a really good thing that we go on these presentations and we look at other cities and compare what we're paying to other cities. But really, what we were wanting to see is the actual revenues. And we have an estimation of 2021, and then the actual revenues that are budgeted 2022 are still estimates. And it's what we budgeted for, it's what we believe will be correct. What I'm looking for, especially in a rate study or anything like that, is any empirical evidence that we may have from the, from the, the digital meters that we've installed to date, if we're actually seeing a little windfall revenues for the residents of Friendswood. To me, I like looking at estimates, that's what we agreed to when we passed the budget. We don't know if that revenue is actually going to come in, Mo just mentioned that. If people shut off their waters, it won't come in. And then our fixed costs are fixed costs. But I think our obligations for debt did go down slightly for the 2023 year. And I don't know how much we raised the sewer rates on our residents for our revenue to jump up to even clear the six million dollar year. Scroll down.
Yes, sir.
In the year that we spent, well, the year we spent, we almost cleared enough revenue in 2021 to cover the six million sixty-one that the mayor had talked about. But we were in the black in 2021. 2022, we had an overexorbitant expenditure we had to take care of at Black Hawk. And then we're projecting a, in the black, revenues and expenses good. I just want to see if there's any empirical evidence by these digital meters, if we're actually going to be collecting more revenue. And the sooner that we get that information, I think would be better so that we can explore possibly changing the rates for the residents. If it's just covering it, well, then we're going to have to stick with the rates. I'm not completely unrealistic here. But if we show that this, these meters are actually creating a little windfall, we don't need to take in more money than we need. We don't. a little windfall, we don't need to take in more money than we need. We don't, we don't. We just need to take in what we have to take in to make sure that we have sewer and good clean water for the Friendswood residents.
Yes, sir. Um, to, to answer some of those questions, uh, we will get that empirical data to you, but right now it's a little premature. Uh, we're coming off the heels of the driest summer we've had in nearly a decade. So, uh, a lot of the, the data we have, even though it's not all on automated meters, uh, is based on people using more water this year than they had in prior year, simply because of how dry it's been. Um, once we're done with the five-year windows, Katina alluded to of projects, there are multitude of projects in the wings that are needed to be completed so that we don't become Flint, Michigan. We don't become Jackson, Mississippi. And those are two cases most recently
I certainly don't want that.
in which there was catastrophic failure in the systems. One of our basic responsibilities as a municipality is to provide clean water and sewer services to our residents.
But not to the extents where, where we're over and above the ninety-day reserve to the tune of six or seven million dollars, even though we know that that's earmarked for capital improvements.
Correct.
We just wanna stay pretty tight with our, with our budgets. That's all I'm asking.
And, and I agree.
There's empirical data. I wanna know that.
And we'll, we'll get the data to you. Um, last year, we were seven hundred, nearly seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars below the ninety-day reserve. Uh, this year, thankfully, we're back in the black. But, um, we'll get you the data. We'll just need a little bit more time for us to get more stable information. Thank you, Mo.
And I will mention too, um, as you saw on the screen, the water revenues exceeded, um, the expenditures for that. But the revenues for water and sewer are in the same fund. So where we have a, a negative on one side, the, the other side supplements pretty much, so.
Thank you, Katina. You did a great job.
You're welcome.
All right. Item B, receiving to discuss an update regarding the capital improvement projects presented by Director of Engineering, Hill Arias.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Different presentation.
Sorry, we're having a little technical difficulty, so I'm running. Okay, I'm here to, uh, give you the latest update on our capital improvements project. Uh, I'll jump right into it. The, uh, Fire Station Number Two Reconstruction Project, uh, we are, uh, about at the halfway point on that project. This is a, this, uh, slide is a little outdated now. Uh, steel is already, uh, obviously, uh, up in the air. Uh, and, uh, it looks like we're, uh, gonna hit a target date of, uh, May twenty twenty-three, uh, at the rate things are going right now. So, uh, the next thing is the, uh, Public Safety Building, uh, Expansion. Uh, that's a little bit further along, uh, about three quarters of the way, uh, complete. Interior work is ongoing on that project. Uh, we're looking at a completion date of April twenty twenty-three, uh, maybe March if, uh, things fall into place, uh, with that project. The next is the, uh, Blackhawk Facility Renovation and Shelter. Uh, the, uh, uh, main facility, uh, the construction contract is up for approval, uh, tonight. And I'll, uh, get into a little bit more of the details later on, uh, during the discussion on that, uh, subject. Uh, and uh, we, uh, do have a shelter component that is going to be, uh, bid out, uh, here in the very near future. Uh, the reason that, uh, it's been in, done in, uh, this way is, uh, Public Works and Engineering, uh, currently have their offices in what's going to become the, uh, uh, public shelter at this building. Uh, we need, uh, to have those, uh, offices constructed before we can move out and, uh, those offices, old offices, uh, uh, demolished, uh, so that, uh, it can be renovated into a shelter.
Hill, on the shelter, um, now the shelter dollars are not coming from the same dollars as the renovation. Is that right?
They're not. We got a, a grant through the General Land Office, ultimately funneled through Harris County, disaster recovery dollars of nearly nine hundred and fifty-something thousand dollars, uh, for the shelter component. Uh, just elaborating on Hill's comments, uh, our initial desire was to locate the shelter on the opposite end of the building for efficiency so to maximize the use of the office space that already existed. Unfortunately, the state said that it would not give us the nine hundred-plus thousand dollars in, uh, grant funds if we didn't move the shelter to where the offices are currently located. So, um,
Isn't that weird?
There are federal and state laws that we have absolutely no control over and will oblige wish it with it because we do desperately need the shelter facilities, especially on both sides of the creek. Uh, having a facility on the Harris County side has proved very beneficial during emergencies.
In addition to the amount that he just said, uh, we, uh, staff did go back to, uh, Harris County, um, in the wake of, uh, inflation, uh, projects coming in more expensive than, uh, uh, anticipated a couple of years ago. Uh, we did go back to Harris County, uh, the, uh, uh, community, community services department. And, uh, we shared our concerns with them. And, uh, after some lobbying with them, uh, they did, uh, say to us or tell us that, uh, they would go back to the GLO and, uh, try to get an additional three hundred thousand dollars on behalf of the city. So, uh, uh, that has not been approved yet. Hopefully it is in the works. Um, but Harris County, uh, is working on that. And, uh, we should know something in the next couple of months if, uh, that's gonna be available to offset, uh, some of our costs, uh, so that we're not spending as much as, uh, uh, we would on that, uh, shelter component. Uh, next is the, uh, street maintenance program. Uh, that is complete for the year. Uh, the, uh, striping contract, uh, we are substantially complete on that. Uh, there are some, uh, uh, corrections that need to be made. Uh, there are some, uh, crosswalks that need to be painted that, uh, uh, were left out. Uh, but we'll be, uh, jumping on those here within the next couple of weeks. And, uh, and then that project will be completely done. Uh, and, uh, on this project, it's, it's a, uh, the maintenance is a, uh, an continuous thing. Uh, we are looking at, uh, the next set of streets that we'll be, uh, doing as soon as the, uh, funds allow for that to happen.
You know, I have a question on that.
Yes.
I, I, I happened to drive down Wilderness Trails the other day. And that, that was one of the first roads we did, wasn't it? It's been, what, four years? Something like that. But it's got some problems. Um, it's, it's, it's already had to have a lot of, uh, little tarring ribbons and sections that look like they're failing. Um, is there anything in the plans for that? Cause it didn't, it, it, it didn't look like it held up.
So something that we, uh, uh, have did differently this year is, uh, before, it, it was a year-long process before we even, uh, got to the, uh, construction phase. Uh, we did have, uh, course, uh, taken at every road that was done this year. Uh, and, uh, we had a geotechnical engineer look at every road and make a, uh, uh, recommendation on, uh, repair or, uh, uh, reclamation of that street. Uh, that's something that, uh, hadn't been done before. Uh, it was a, uh, a one-size-fits-all approach. Uh, and, uh, with the, uh, approach that we, uh, had this past year, uh, not only did we have that, but we also had a, uh, a geotechnical engineer on hand, um, testing, uh, compaction, uh, as we went along, uh, and, um, ensuring that we had the, uh, the quality assurance that, um, needed to be there to.
Yeah, a, a, a road near me, Sedora, got done and it looks beautiful. But I'm, I'm just, are there any plans on Wilderness Trails? Cause it
It, it will get added back to the list ultimately. Uh, it was an effort and our, it was a, it was a plan to maximize the use of our dollars to be able to do as many streets as possible. Uh, Rustic was another one. Our Chester was another one that had a similar issue. Uh, and reclamation is, all it is, is the breaking up of the existing asphalt, smoothing it out, and then coming it back with another layer of asphalt on top of it. It's the most cost-effective approach. Unfortunately, as, uh, Hill was alluding to, the subgrade on all streets are not the same. Uh, some, over time, have washed out due to underground water tables, uh, due to traffic loading, a number of other reasons. And simple reclamation won't address those structural integrity issues. So moving forward, yes, with the core samples, we have better data. The geotechnical help, we have better data. Uh, the streets that were done previously, they're, they're still seeing some issues. We'll do some patching here and there, but ultimately they'll have to get resurfaced with a more elaborate, um, solution like we are doing now. And that, that's part of the problem sometimes with going with the cheapest solution, is that you don't get, uh, a product that's, uh, on par with, with what you're seeking.
I think the frustrating thing for me is that we're spending money and, and not, not thoroughly investigating what needs to be done. And, and so the money's not coming back, you know? So it's, it's, uh, and, and in the case of Chester, it's worse now than it was before, before the project.
And, and rightfully so. Typically, for instance, Blackhawk Boulevard where we're doing it, we did full-scale engineering, geotechnical, surveying, everything. In an effort to not lose fifteen or twenty percent of our street maintenance funds to just engineering services, we did the, the, the reclamation, bless you, um, in place. Uh, so we can do the more detailed engineering effort, but it's gonna cut into the available funds for
I'm just suggesting that if we're going to spend the time and effort and money to fix, repair, or replace roads, we should ensure that before we spend any money, we know what we need to do to make it right.
Yep. And we are moving forward with what we did with this last
That needs to be the plan going forward.
Yep.
It is.
We, we can't continue to just, oh, hey, look, we got money. Let's go slap down some asphalt.
Yep.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, so, uh, ne- next to, uh, Blackhawk Boulevard, uh, this is something that we've been discussing now for a couple of months now. Uh, this is a, uh, contribution of one point two million dollars that, uh, Adrian Garcia's office is, uh, giving to, uh, the City of Friendswood. Uh, we are well underway in the repackaging of, uh, the plans for that, uh, project. Uh, and, uh, we should have that, uh, out ready for bid here within the next couple of months. Jump over to, uh, some Tech Dot projects of note. Uh, the curb and ramp project, uh, it is ongoing. It, it's taking a little longer than, uh, uh, what they would hope for. Uh, the, uh, traffic signals have been wired up. Uh, and, um, what they're waiting on, uh, right now is for a, uh, change order proposal to, uh, come to them from the contractor. Uh, and, uh, the way it was explained to me, it's not, uh, uh, a, overly elaborate, uh, networking. It was more of a, uh, a, a done-down version of, uh, connecting the, uh, uh, traffic signals downtown together so that they, uh, work together. Uh, that's gonna be a, uh, matter of, uh, installing survivor optic, uh, downtown. Uh, and so they're waiting on, uh, that proposal to come back to them. And then, uh, once they've, uh, made a decision on that, they'll, uh, uh, proceed on, uh, the next step for that project. Uh, they are exploring some, uh, options on what to do about some, uh, brick pavers, uh, that have started to cause some issues, uh, downtown. Uh, Renee and I, uh, actually met with, uh, Tech Dot, the, uh, area engineer, uh, this morning, uh, to discuss this very, uh, subject. And, um, uh, they haven't settled on a, uh, resolution. Uh, they may, uh, come back and, uh, just replace some brick pavers. Uh, but they're gonna be doing a, uh, more exhaustive, uh, re, uh, look into just where all the, uh, the, the issues are at with, uh, some of the pavers that they have that have been settling and, uh, separating, uh, much, much quicker than it should be. Uh, so potentially there, they might be looking at, uh, uh, replacing those pavers with concrete, uh, dyed concrete, red dyed concrete with a, uh, uh, brick pattern stamped on top of it, uh, which would be a little bit more resilient. Uh, but, um, that would be a matter of, uh, uh, taking a lot of, uh, brick paper out to make that happen. So, uh, hopefully we'll have an, uh, answer from them here within the next, uh, two to three weeks on what exactly are we doing there. We'll update you accordingly. Uh, lastly, uh, did wanna talk about the FM five eighteen, five twenty-eight, uh, request that we made to Tech Dot a little while ago. Uh, we did submit those, uh, that request for improvements, uh, over the summer. And, uh, we did hear back from the area engineer. Uh, they have submitted that project, uh, to the, uh, statewide competition for the, uh, Highway Safety Improvement, uh, Program. Uh, we haven't been given a, uh, exact date on, uh, when to expect an answer on that. Uh, but from going back and looking at past calls, uh, it looked like, uh, December, uh, was usually the target date where they would cut everything off. Uh, so if that were to go through, uh, we could see, uh, improvements ma- being made at this intersection to include, uh, double-turn lanes, um, some dedicated right-turn lanes and, um, add a very minimum, uh, improvement to the, uh, signalization.
Hill, I probably bring this up to Mo at least once a month.
Yes.
So the state is in agreement about the double-turn lanes? Is that what I'm understanding? That it's in their queue? We just won't know anything until maybe December?
Yeah, it's, it's been, uh, submitted to their, uh, district office, uh, for, um, support, additional support. But, uh, in general, um, what it's, the, uh, the study that we gave to them, it, it demonstrates that these double-turn lanes are effective. And, uh, at the end of the day, that, that's what they're wanting to do is, uh, to improve the, uh, 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 service level at those intersections.
And so maybe in December, we'd find out if it's gonna move on.
I, I think, uh, it may be closer to the, uh, uh, first part of next year before we hear anything.
Hey, Hill.
Yes?
I have a question. Um, have we heard anything about twenty-three fifty-one? Um, several years ago, the city staff was told that if they put in a block culvert from twenty-three fifty-one to Cowards Creek, then we could possibly widen twenty-three fifty-one to four lanes and a median turn lane. Twenty-three fifty-one at four o'clock, you can't get from five eighteen to sunset. From sunset, you can't get to five twenty-eight at four o'clock. I'm just saying, Tech Dot needs to be made aware that, and it would possibly help the elementary school over there, that they might get a turn lane and they could, those people can get off the road at twenty-three fifty-one. Yeah, you are. But I'm just wondering, have we heard anything about that? Cause we put that block culvert in several years ago.
So it, it's still in the, the long-term, long-range plan for the state, but it's outside the ten-year window. So it's not in their unified transportation plan. Um, at one point, their, the traffic volumes, it indicated that it would be a shorter-term project, but their latest, uh, volumes compared to other areas in the region, it didn't score as highly. Uh, so it's outside the ten-year window.
Yeah, so another ten years of being backed up from five eighteen to sunset and on into Alvin.
Unfortunately, yes. And it's part and parcel with what was discussed at the, the library last Thursday. The, the regional transportation needs and not just Friendswood, but this entire area. And how do we position ourselves to compete for those federal dollars with other areas that do benefit from the investment? For instance, we're not gonna improve air quality in Friendswood measurably compared to a project that improves capacity in the middle of Houston. Our congestion management, even though it improves services in Friendswood, it's not gonna reduce, uh, it's not gonna improve services as measured compared to another area that's highly traveled in the, in a business district. So, uh, we're all competing for the same dollars. We're hoping to get a third tier of projects outside of urban and rural designation. Unfortunately, we're considered urban when we're nowhere near the level of density that you're talking about when you're looking at Webster, Houston, uh, type projects. But it's desperately needed, just like, uh, other corridors in the city of Friendswood. But we'll continue to push those projects up and see what Tech Dot says. Now, John may be going behind you and telling Tech Dot, don't, don't you dare do those projects.
Please don't improve any, uh, traffic in Friendswood. Oh, yeah, that's all.
Yep.
If the city increases to fifty thousand, would that change, or whatever the number is, does that change anything as far as?
So it does So, it does help us in regard to getting an automatic seat at the table for various committees at the regional level. We're very fortunate with what Sally does with HGAC and her nominating me to sit on some of those committees. It allows us to be somewhat in charge of our own destiny when it comes to the operation of traffic signals throughout the city. We don't have to rely on Tech Dot to manage those and optimize those. We can take care of that ourselves. And it does give us some ability to move forward with these projects, such as the dual left turn lanes and the right turn lanes, without waiting for their approval if we are willing to fund it. The downside to that, all of that comes with additional cost. So, somehow, we need to offset the expenditures with additional revenue somewhere.
Thanks, Hill.
Thank you.
Item C, receive and discuss an update regarding police department staffing. Presented by Chief of Police Robert Wieners and Deputy Chief of Police Josh Rogers.
And before these fine gentlemen get started, I just want to state, you may recall, we talked about this during the budget cycle, the need for an additional police officer. Y'all have heard the staffing ratio quoted to you for the last 10 or plus years as to the number of officers per thousand. Obviously, it does impact the level of safety that's in our community. I have asked Chief to develop a presentation to solidify that staffing ratio for once and for all, to get buy-in or quote-unquote blessing from council that if this is something y'all support, when we submit future budget applications to council for consideration, that this would fall under a force at work if the population growth had justified the additional officers. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Bob.
So, purely informational, we're not asking for anything. I think before I even get started, I'll have to remind Councilmember Scott that it's the Marine Corps birthday on Thursday. How many years? How many years?
Need 15.
No.
We still have 40.
So, come on, brother.
270.
What year? What year birthday is it?
1775 minus...
Yeah, yeah, 247.
247.
247.
Sniffer five Marines.
So, at least the grunts know how to do math. Yes, sir.
The guys that could do math went into the Navy.
What was that?
I said, the guys that could do math went into the Navy.
Okay, sorry, John. Friendly fire, remember, friendly fire is not friendly fire. Right.
247.
So, what I wanted to...
At least he started them at.
Sir?
At least he started them at. He got 1775.
No, that is correct. So, I just want to start off with an update. And that is that we went live with our new software on October 24th. So, that doesn't mean, as you go live, that everything's in place, but that means that we're at least getting started with the data conversion. You know, we've got some mapping that we're updating. And in addition to that, there's also a desk officer reporting feature that's going to allow, you know, residents to go, to make their own report. We'll screen those reports after they make them, but it's going to be a lot more user-friendly for our residents. So, next slide? This is one of my favorite slides, obviously. And what it does is it indicates that we're controlling the time or the crime rate.
I'd like to point out that I became mayor in 2018.
That's when all the good stuff, that's when it all started to happen. So, the Houston Chronicle, in June, went ahead and reported that Friendswood has got its lowest crime rate ever, Mr. Mayor. So, there you go.
Thank you, Chief. Good job.
In October, Safe Wise, one of the venues out there, internet venues that compares cities, put us at the 19th safest city in the state. Unfortunately, we've had two homicides in the last five years. Both are related to domestic violence. And as regards the one that we had in September of this year, that family had just moved into Friendswood. We had no visibility on any of the family issues relating to that residence. And it's unfortunate, but the suspect's in custody right now. Let me go to the next slide. So, I'll let you look at this slide for a little bit. Not an eye test, but it does give you the comparisons of where we're at locally. And you can take a look at League Cities. Theirs may look a little bit low, but take a look at the number of civilian employees they have. I mean, they've got almost tripled the number of civilian employees. And then, we basically fall into the lower half of the staffing ratios. And I think you take a look at our civilian personnel. I mean, we're right there at the, at a very, at a very tight civilian staffing ratio. So, one thing I would like to point out as it relates to crime rate, please note that this slide shows 6.4, and the previous slide showed 6.51. So, if you were at the chamber last year, I complimented Aubrey on her population numbers because they were spot-on. And the data deviation that we had based on our count of crime and the population numbers accounts for the lower, it accounts for the lower rate on that slide. So, I think that, all things being considered, you know, when the Chronicle gave their, wrote their article, they said that not only does Friendswood have the lowest crime rate, but for city number two and city number three, it's not even close. And here's our historical staffing. And all that slide is meant to show is that there has been a plan that councils, prior to this council, have adopted over the years as far as staffing goes, and they've been able to balance capacity and capability to make sure that the community is safe. And at the end of the day, I think probably the only thing I would point out was the slight increase that we had in 2018 after the Santa Fe shooting and the school district came in and requested additional officers. So, with that, I will turn over the presentation to Deputy Chief Rogers.
He got the interesting slides. He got the more boring ones here. That's right. I think the main thing on here, he talked about per capita, where we're at with the 1.56. But I think to note is the map where we originally had the city broken down into three districts, A, B, and C district. This graph shows the five, and we did that for the build-out configuration of our new patrol, for our new software. So, we can look at later on, five districts broke up, basically broke up C district and A district into two to give us a total of five. Let's see, pretty much here kind of speaks for itself, but, you know, we've modified our business model periodically, you know, to meet the challenges and to kind of leverage the environment. There are leverage of the technology to meet the environment at the time. Most notably, you know, the active shooter training that we've done in the school, and also the number of fatality accidents, and, you know, implementing our own traffic crash team to handle fatality accidents that's been occurring on the FM roads. And then, the field support unit, our FSU unit, that, you know, we stood up in 2008 to help offset CID and patrol. So, we look at ways to squeeze the most out of what we got and move our folks around the best suit, you know, what's going on at that given time in the environment. Is crime the only concern? You know, citizen expectations are high. And in the community for education and public safety, as we can see, we're constantly striving for what we get awarded each year. Number of gated community has increased and will likely increase more as folks seek additional layers for security modes to feel safe. You don't have to look far to see what's going on, you know, every night, which is only several miles from where we stand tonight. The department will need to evaluate the changes in technology. Best practice to meet those expectations as we move forward. Because unfortunately, we know that crime's not going anywhere. The challenge is going to be for us to, you know, control that in the future. Factors that influence the delivery of service. You know, we have avoided seeking additional tasks, and we're very careful about that and not implement new programs without the city manager's approval and where appropriate, city council approval. We don't want to overspeak and get involved in something that we're not going to be able to support and handle with our current staffing level. We're doing, we're doing a good job, I think, to keep up with what we've got going on. And anything additional that we do is going to require, you know, more staff to do that. The last bullet on the slide, you know, shows the factors that affect the gray area that we're all familiar with now after COVID. It's injuries, FMLA, vacations, resignations, termination, and training. Those are all huge factors that, you know, when you operate, when you operate close to the end there, you don't have a lot, you don't have a lot of room for error.
I have a question here. How are you doing when you have to replace officers? And how's it going in getting in new qualified officers? How's that going?
Yeah, so, you know, in dispatch and with patrol, it's, you know, it's a challenge. So, we're doing, we're doing well, you know, but we, it's not the same that it was with the number of candidates that put in, you know, for the profession itself. Everyone nationally has seen an enormous drop in the number of folks that want to, that want to do the job. So, I think overall, given our pay and the way the city is made up, that, you know, we're doing a good job in that right now. But that's going to continue to be a struggle as well. Probably not going, probably not going to get any better.
Prior fiscal years, we had issues with vacancies, and that led to a lot of our operational shortages, just due to the number of vacancies that we had. This year, we're not seeing the, as much the vacancies, is more so we're seeing the items that Josh had alluded to up there, and that's folks out on FMLA, either returning to leave or dealing with COVID. We've had a wave of COVID go through our staff.
So, these are the expectations and industry realities. You know, I think they have to remain somewhat in balance, right? This can, this can be done by sharing the information to the public and elected officials, and they're informed of what is happening in and around the city. And we do that, obviously, through the, our weekly news releases, Facebook, Twitter, annual reports, and also incident-based news releases that are vital components. We release a lot of information out there as far as what's going on. And we do that, we do that on purpose. So, there's no one living, you know, no one living in a, you know, a bubble that we keep, that we hide what's going on around us. We don't, we put a lot of information out to try to make sure that, you know, the realities are there as far as what is going on in the community, the expectations. Additional factors to consider. The effectiveness, the effectiveness of the criminal justice system has always been a challenge, and that's going to continue to be very much so today. We don't have to look far again to see that homicides are up since 2018 by 59% in Harris County. We talked about the two that we've had in the last five years. There's probably two in the last five minutes, right, almost on a daily basis, again, in Harris County. And they report 35% of those homicides are related in Harris County to domestic violence, as we mentioned, our two were as well. And then, we'll be challenged going forward with the domestic violence, drugs, DWI, and then the one that no one wants to talk about, all of the mental health issues and that system that is completely broke as well. Other non-s sworn staffing concerns. Number of sworn employees will have to increase. As you saw there in the slides, we're able to get a lot done with the folks that we have wearing many different hats. But as we grow to build out, towards build out, you know, we're going to have to look at some more of those support roles moving forward. And again, COVID has shown that, as we move on, as we move forward, we hired another dispatcher this go-round because we learned a pretty good lesson in there. We dodged a big bullet that no one else in the police department that can do their job, the dispatching that's in there. So, when they're out, they're out. So, we've added another, another in there to just kind of take, take a little bit of load off of them and make sure that we're not burning out employees with mandatory overtime because we can't afford to lose one single one of them. And that's pretty much it. Any questions?
I just wanted to say, I don't know if you two were in the room when Murad was asking our second graders tonight what they liked about our city. And one of the first responses from a young student was, "We live in a safe place." So, I think it is a big deal from young to old that, and I'm so proud of those numbers and the crime rate dropping, and thank you for all that you do.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I would like to echo that, Josh, Bob. We are so blessed to have you two at the leadership of our PD because we know for a fact, everybody in this room knows that, you know, we would not have the low crime rate if it weren't for your guidance and your outstanding police work policing for this community. So, thank you. Can't say it enough. Thank you, thank you.
Mayor, before we move on, right now, based on the current budget, we're authorized to have 66 sworn officers. That puts us at 1.56 officers per thousand. I assume y'all are comfortable with maintaining that ratio moving forward. So, in future fiscal years, we will present that as a force at work if the population warrants it.
I agree, that should be a force at work. I think that till that number changes and you guys present to us why that number should change, I think there shouldn't be a big discussion about it. It should be, what's 1.56 times our population? And we come up with a number, and that's what we have to put on our budget.
And then, that goes on to the other question. If we're not able to support the revenue to fund the, any of those, then we'd have to leave it as a vacancy for the time being.
Well, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
All right, item eight, city managers' report.
We have talked about a number of these items during mayor and council comments, but as you know, we have a lot going on. This past week, October 27th, our senior center held their annual health fair, which I assume some of you may or may not have attended. Not that you're seniors, but just as a friendly face as a council member. Councilmember Grifon mentioned the Veterans Day luncheon coming up on Monday, a week from today, November 14th, at the Activity Building. It's a good event, and it recognizes our veterans that have served our country, and it's, encourage you to attend if you have the time. You may see Christmas is starting to, it's starting to look a lot like Christmas around town. Decorations are going up in Stevenson Park for the annual lighted Christmas trail. They will be completed and operational starting Thanksgiving and will run through Christmas. The senior program is hosting their Thanksgiving potluck on November 22nd. So, if you're available and would like to attend, please contact the senior center for more information. In December, we have quite a few holidays in the park events, December 2nd, 9th, and 16th. On Saturday, December 3rd, we will have the Flapjack Fun Run. So, if you like to run, get your running shoes on, and please sign up to burn off some of those Thanksgiving calories. And then, Santa will be in the park. He will make a surprise appearance on December 3rd for the youngsters that missed the library opportunity on, well, that will be missing the library opportunity on December 5th. And then, if you miss all of those and still want to see Santa, he will be at our senior program on December 21st, so you can have breakfast with Santa on your last-second Christmas wish list. Town hall meetings for the Stevenson Park parking lot have taken place, two of them. One in October and one, or one in September, and then one this past October 25th. We've also had online surveys that have been filled out by a number of folks. I want to say over 300 responses have been received. We did see increased engagement amongst our youth. Teenagers in the high school have shown up aptly, pointing out that they will be the ones that get to see what's built out there at the rate of which we build things, these city government. But it's been good. I encourage folks that haven't gone to one of the town hall meetings to please do so. The next one will be held, the last one will be held on November 29th, so later this month, and also to do an online survey. The November 29th meeting will be a little different than the one in September and October in that the consultant half associates will be presenting some of the items that were brought up over the first two meetings and what they've seen in those online reports. At the end of the day, what matters though is that, that, those, uh, those results will be presented to KFB, FDDC, and ultimately to this city council for a decision. Funding for these, these efforts are not identified. It will have to be a, a bond, a grant, or something else that will need to be pursued for funding. But, uh, you ultimately have the decision as to what you would like to see out there based upon the public input. This was intended to gather that information.
Marad?
Yes?
We need to let you know if we want to attend in case there's a quorum or anything.
No, uh, y'all will not be conducting city business, but we will post it just as a fails, uh, as a precaution.
Post, okay, good, thank you.
Uh, it was also mentioned earlier tonight about early voting and election day voting, so, uh, would echo that. If you haven't voted yet, please go vote tomorrow. Uh, I have been, uh, questioned quite a bit, as has our city secretary more so than I have, as to why voting hasn't, is not taking place this year in city hall. Voting hasn't taken place in city hall for the last four plus years, namely because we're not set up in a manner that's efficient and safe. Uh, we have issues with folks stacking on the, uh, the stairwell. Uh, we've had a folks where elderly residents have passed out while waiting in line here at city hall. Uh, due to the, the size of the room and the, the length of time in which they need the space, uh, the only rooms available are the ones upstairs. Uh, folks got upset with, uh, with a handicapped person using the elevator, thinking they were cutting in line with the other folks that were lined up in line. So, uh, in 2018, we made the decision to move forward to, to say that we'll offer other facilities such as our Activity Building, uh, such as the hangar. I have been talking with the school district about maybe a partnership of some sort to finding larger facilities. Ideal locations are those that are not used on a weekly basis. A church would be a spectacular location for early voting, uh, if, 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 if one of the churches can accommodate. I believe the Baptist church accommodated about two years ago. In short, this is not our election, though. We present these items to Galveston County, uh, and they decide where they want to hold the elections. Ultimately, this year, based upon the, the locations that we offered, they settled on the Chamber of Commerce right here on FM 518. The key to it is not to go early. I guess I went and voted on day one and there was a line out the door. You go the next day, you could go in and out in less than five minutes. But, um, I did want to elaborate on that in case you're getting questions as to why voting isn't taking place at city hall.
Thanks, Marad. Item nine A, consider authorizing an interlocal agreement with Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District for drainage improvements at 310 and 301 West Castlewood and 2 Queens Lane to mitigate future disaster losses within the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Grifon, second by councilmember Rocky. All in favor? Seven to nothing. B, consider approving a three-year contract with Friendswood Chamber of Commerce for Economic Development Services.
Motion, is it right? Motion to approve. Were we ready to say it?
Yeah, we were, yes.
I'll second.
Motion of councilmember Hank, second from councilmember Grifon. Any discussion?
Yeah, I've got, uh, go ahead.
Councilmember Rarner.
On the price of the tickets that's in the, whatever our sponsorship is, it says cost. Cost has no definition, so what is?
Cost of the food, I think, is what they're saying.
Yes, sir. So, um, historically, we have a, a, it's a three-year contract, but we pay the Chamber of Commerce 20,000 a year as members, uh, the city of Friendswood as members of the Chamber of Commerce. Each year, they hold an annual state-of-the-city event in which they charge us $35 for our attendance, even though we, uh, we're providing the talent and the mayor, uh, and a number of, uh, volunteers of our boards and committees this council attend, as does city staff. Uh, since we do spend 20,000 a year, we had asked the, the Chamber of Commerce if they would, uh, at least waive half the tickets for the city or consider just giving it to us at cost, because they have to obviously pay the catering services for those that eat meals there. Uh, they, uh, they settled on the latter and will be charging us the cost of what their bill is for our attendees.
Do we know what portion of our contribution is their total revenue source?
So their annual budget is a little under, uh, right around 300,000, so we're a little under 10% um, of their annual revenue.
I just, I feel like there's a sponsorship level there where they should comp those tickets to a certain extent.
And that's a fair, that's a, as council, you have the ultimate say as to the approval or denial of this contract. If you don't, if you're not ready to act and would like that, we can, we can go back to them and suggest such.
No, I mean, that's, that's the only portion I really had, I guess. Steve, you had something to?
No, I'm going to answer it. I was just curious if it's always been a three-year contract.
Uh, it started as a three-year contract two cycles back. Prior to that, it was done annually.
Hey, any other discussion? Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Opposed? Five to two.
Yes, sir.
Okay, item C, consider ratifying the interlocal agreement with the Harris County Flood Control District, Galveston County, and the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District for construction, constructing an offline stormwater detention basin colloquially, colloquially known as the FM 1959 Detention Basin, located on land parcels owned by the Flood Control District and Harris County, adjacent to Dixie Farm Road along the northern bank of Clear Creek, and the Whitcomb Channel terracing and stormwater detention basin projects located near FM 528 along the northern bank of Clear Creek.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Grifon, councilmember Branson, all in favor?
And before we move on to the next item, I just want to point out, this is the, by and far, the largest investment that we've made in drainage. We're talking, the city of Friendswood's commitment on this endeavor is $25 million. We're getting $62 million worth of projects completed, the 1959 project, as well as the Whitcomb property. Uh, but separate from the capital investment, there's an ongoing maintenance component of this. We will be responsible for cutting the grass on nearly 50 acres of property at 1959, uh, after this project's completed. And then again, on the Whitcomb property of roughly 40-plus acres of property. So future, uh, budget cycles, when we talk about increases on our operational expenditures, this will be one of them. Um, just wanted y'all to be aware of that.
Why, why is it we took the lead on that? Why wasn't Harris County the lead on it?
It's their, they don't, they can work on projects that, uh, they can partner their dollars in other projects if they so chose. They said that they're willing to contribute.
So part of the interlocal agreement was, um, management.
Yes, sir. They said they're willing to partner with us on construction, but they don't have the capacity to do the maintenance.
Well, they, I thought they were.
Point of order, we've already voted on this, we can't discuss anymore?
You, that is correct.
Did we vote on it?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, item D, consider awarding the Black Hawk Facility renovation project CSP 2022-17 to Construction Masters of Houston, Inc. I have a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion. Hill, you got some information?
Okay, uh, so, uh, this is a, this was a competitive seal proposal. Uh, we did get, uh, base bids that were very close to each other. And, uh, there was a difference of, uh, a thousand dollars and 1,081 dollars between the, uh, the two, uh, lowest bidders. Unbehagen was one, one of them, and, uh, uh, Construction Masters was the other one. Went back and looked at the, uh, advertisement for the, uh, uh, competitive seal proposal, and, uh, I looked at the, uh, uh, criteria that was, uh, set out from the very beginning. Uh, and, uh, the, uh, price was going to be, uh, a good chunk of that. Uh, but it was only going to be half of the consideration of, uh, what the, uh, the city was going to be looking at. Uh, ultimately, uh, and it said, um, numerous times in the, uh, uh, both in the, uh, um, advertisement and in the specifications, was that, uh, what the city was looking for was, uh, what the city staff felt was the best value to the city. And, uh, when you have, uh, two contractors that are bidding, uh, that close to each other, you have to look at the, uh, other, uh, criteria that we were, uh, uh, considering. And, uh, in the case of, uh, Construction Masters, there was one thing that really stood out, and that was the, uh, quality assurance that they have. Like, uh, uh, we've been discussing on some other projects tonight, uh, going with the, uh, uh, lowest bidder isn't necessarily, uh, the, uh, the best thing in, in, uh, uh, most cases. Uh, that's not a slight against anybody, you know, in the room or anybody that, uh, uh, submitted a bid. Uh, it just came down to a, um, a matter of what is their program? And what are they going to do to assure that we get a good quality product? Yes, sir.
Hill, is Construction Masters a local company?
Yes, that's, uh, they're out of Pearland.
They're out of Pearland, they're not a Friendswood company.
They're not a Friendswood company, but they are, uh, uh, in the, uh, area.
You know, I like to lock, to hire a local, because it's easier to call up a Friendswood resident and say, hey, we've got a problem over here. You want to come take a look at it? And he lives here. So I've already said this in regards to HVAC on some other bidding problems that we've had. If we hire a local, it, 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 it always behooves us to try to hire a local.
Uh, and, uh, if that's a, uh, criteria, that needs to be, uh, included in the future.
Did they get an interview?
Uh, there was no interview.
No interviews?
No interviews.
What kind of quality assurance did you get?
Uh, they have a, uh, program, and I, I can, uh, uh, follow up with an email, uh, uh, to, uh, show y'all what the, uh, the program is. But, um, uh, the difference was, uh, they have a, uh, person that is specifically dedicated, that that's their, uh, only job, uh, to ensure quality insurance that, uh, to ensure that, uh, everything is meeting specification, uh, everything that is, uh, being submitted, uh, is what we're asking for, uh, stuff like that.
Well, we had a gentleman here this evening that says he has 70 years of construction, uh, contract construction, um, experience. How much experience does Construction Masters have in the area?
I, I don't have that number up top of my head, no.
So it sounds like we have a fair process. Everybody submits, you evaluate these things, and, uh, you, you select the, you select the winner. I, I have no problem with that process. Now, whether or not we want to, in the future, talk about some weighting towards Friendswood resident construction companies, maybe that's a good idea, but in this case, we had a fair, would you say that?
I would, I would say we had a fair process. These were concerted, uh, sealed bids, these were not, um, proposals, these were not just a simple bid. So it wasn't just a dollar-to-dollar comparison. Uh, we've had situations in the past, and a lot of these firms, even though they may have a resident that lives here, they're not Friendswood businesses. They just have, uh, this is where they reside. Um, if council's not comfortable awarding this contract, we can definitely, uh, postpone the, the selection criteria. Uh, but this was thoroughly vetted with Hill and his, his staff, and Construction Masters was selected based upon, uh, the quality assurances that he elaborated on.
So, Hill, I'm assuming that you have criteria set out before you even set out these bids?
It was set out, yes, ma'am.
And established and, and it's weighted by different things you're going to be considering that are included in the bid. And how many people are looking at that when you make that determination on who gets?
Usually, a, uh, selection team will consist from, anything from three to five. Uh, in this case, there were, uh, it, it was a team of three people.
And you have a rubric that you use, so each one goes onto the rubric with their points or whatever?
Uh, the, uh.
How they're scored?
Yeah, how they're, they're scored, the, uh, 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 criteria is provided to them, so.
I know that a thousand dollars is very tight. You know, there's, there's not that much difference in a, a bid of a thousand dollars when you're talking about this much money. But I just wanted to make sure we had criteria that you established before you sent out for the bid.
Yes.
Right, for the, okay.
Uh, on your, um, evaluation, that, that the one company had a full-time quality assurance person, is that right? That was a kind of a thing that swung it. Wouldn't that depend on the size of the company as to whether they can afford a, a full-time person? If, if, if a company was smaller than one, they would maybe have to split that role up? I mean, or?
I, I wouldn't be able to answer that. I, I'm not sure of the, uh, the volume that these two companies have, so.
So the selection criteria was experience, ability to finish projects on schedule, the qualifications of the subcontractor. So a lot of times, the, the proposal that we receive, the firm themselves aren't the ones doing the work. They subcontract a number of the various activities in the contract, quality assurance and the, the current workload of the, the organization that's submitting a proposal. So if, if they're overly stretched, obviously, our project is not a priority.
I don't quite understand the two-tier process, that you had two phases of going on in this. Is the two-tier process actually renovating the building and then tearing out? What, what do you mean by the two-tier process? Is that the, uh?
We're going to move, so currently, the offices for Public Works and Engineering is located on the right side of the building, the right third of the, uh, the building.
That's the two-tier phase.
We're going to move that to the center of the building with the construction, with Construction Masters. And then once that area is vacated, then we can do the shelter component that's on the.
And the shelter component. And then there's also another component you mentioned that might be storage?
Yes, there, so there's garage and storage facilities that will take place on the far left-hand side of the building, the old events.
I just believe that this is so tight that I'd like to make a motion to table it, and let's all have a chance to look at it.
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Who'd like to table the, uh, and look at it again? Okay, we'll table it.
Yes, sir, and we will send you more information in the meantime between now and the next council meeting.
Thank you, Mo, appreciate it.
Thanks for bringing your concern, Mr. Unbehagen. We will, uh, we'll take a look at this and make it right. Item E, consider authorizing a grant administrative services agreement with Grant Works Incorporated for the Houston-Galveston Area Council, HGAC Council of Governments Method of Distribution Grant, RFP 2022-18.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Wait, 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 wait.
Method distribution.
Okay, now, um, we're getting an, a grant administrative services, and I looked at, is this the one where we have an agreement in there? But I didn't see how much this is costing us.
So if y'all award a contract, uh, we will be selecting a, a firm to represent us in Grant Works, uh, and it's, should be in the backup material.
No, we're doing this in two different areas, right?
So we're doing it for three projects, the, this item and the next two items, uh, for different, uh, grants.
Are, are they going to be the same grant services company? Or they're going to be, they're going to be different grant services companies?
Correct.
Okay, how much is this grant, grant service company going to cost us? And this is to comply with HGOC, the mod and, and LMI, right?
So the Houston-Galveston Area Council was, um, and Samantha, feel free to correct anything or jump in, but Houston-Galveston Area Council was just, uh, charged with distributing roughly, uh, 488 million?
Yes, that's correct.
Flood dollars.
Uh, flood dollars, and we were allocated roughly, uh, 4.6 million dollars. Of that 4.6, 5 point, uh, 50% of it has to benefit loaded modern income areas.
And these people can help us figure out how to get there?
Correct.
Okay, so how much are they going to charge us to, um, to do this service for us? They're going to look into all the, the precepts and everything that goes into qualifying for LMI, and then we're going to hire, and they're going to be able to get this funding, 2.7 million dollars, I believe it is. How much do they charge us for this service? I never saw that in the agreement, and I've kind of looked for it.
We don't know, I don't, I don't believe we know what the estimated, do you want to talk?
So there's a, a cap of, uh, 6% on, uh.
Okay, see, I didn't see that. A 6% of the 2.7 we're trying to qualify for?
Correct.
It's under Article 6, um.
Yeah, I know, I was reading it. I was trying to find where, where the, where the, I saw the insurance, insurance requirements, and I mean, you know, I was, I was scrolling pretty fast. And then same with the next one. But, um, okay, so now 6% cap of, of 2.7 million.
And it's all going to be reimbursable as part of the grant, so the city's not going to be out anything, this will be funded by the grant itself.
It's coming out of the grant?
Correct.
Okay, yes, that's still our money.
It, it's still our money, but.
If we could figure that out ourselves, we would have an extra 6%.
And, yes, sir.
Big, big yes. Any other questions on this one? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, six to one. Item F, consider authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement for the 2022 funding of the building resilient infrastructure and communities brick grant program and/or flood mitigation assistance grant program for the city of Friendswood, RFQ 2022-19 with Freeze &amp; Nichols, Inc.
I would, I would like to speak just a little bit on this. So our plan is to pursue.
Second, and then you can have discussion, so.
Sorry, Samantha.
Motion to approve.
And motion is second, now Samantha.
Now you can discuss.
You almost violated our rules there.
Sorry. Whoa. So, um.
So the engineering department's plan is to pursue the Black Hawk project, the additional flood control project that we've discussed previously. And in order to, in order to put in a application, we would need to have a fair amount of preliminary engineering work done in order to submit the application, and we do not have the capability to do that in-house at this time.
And a lot of this work has been done by Freez and Nichols, right?
That is correct. A lot of.
A lot of this data's already been generated.
And, and we do have an estimated cost on what this will be at this time of about $66,000.
And this, the intent of this is so that we can seek infrastructure dollars to do the Black Hawk and Whitcomb projects as well on there.
Any questions? Motion is second. All in favor? Seven, nothing. Item G, consider authorizing a grant administration services agreement with Jeff S. Ward and Associates, Inc. for grant application development and grant management for the 2022 Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities BRIC Grant Program and/or Flood Mitigation Assistance Grant Program, RFP 2022-20.
Motion to approve.
Motion is second.
Now, is this just to get out to qualify for BRIC?
This is, this is a separate program.
To help to get us to qualify for BRIC?
So.
Didn't we hire someone about four years ago to help us with grants?
Wasn't it Jeff Ward?
Jeff Ward, same guy. He was a whiz.
Different, different program, and this is for, I'll defer to Samantha.
I thought we did.
Yeah.
Okay.
More than pays.
I'm just grade mad going back four years. I'm like, what? I thought we did this.
Jeff completed that contract, and we had secured, and for FMA dollars, we secured over two and a half million dollars of buyouts for FMA, and then we had another two and a half million in HMGP.
You sure he doesn't want to become a city employee?
We, we've tried. He's, he's represented us multiple times in the last 22 years and has done a fine job with it. But no, he, he likes being a consultant.
I bet. Okay. All in favor?
Yeah.
Seven to nothing. Item H, consider authorizing the First Amendment to the School Resource Officer Agreement with Friendswood Independent School District for certain technology improvements for an integrated safety response system.
Motion to approve.
Motion is second. Does anybody want to hear from chief or?
I do. I always want to hear from chief.
So.
What happened with Alabama?
Roll tide roll.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I deserved that. So what this does is it creates a floor plan map for each school campus, and on that map, there'll be little green dots. And those little green dots are going to be the IP addresses of the digital cameras that are resident in each one of those facilities. So as we go ahead and implement this, this is something that we can migrate over to our CCISD schools, and we can also do our daycares in our church schools. So, I mean, this is just the very beginning. We're going to be the only city that has it, and there's already people calling us wanting to find out how they can buy it. So, I mean.
You're doing a better job than Bill O'Brien.
Can I ask a, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
If, if we vote and we approve this, then those little green dots with the IP addresses, does, does it become public information because it's, because we've done it as a city?
No.
No, sir.
Good.
I have a question, too. Didn't we attempt to try to do some integrations with the schools through social media and other attempts, and that, that got us into a little bit of trouble? Are, are we looking at possibly crossing some barrier lines here, going into the school system with this IT along with our city police officers?
So they, they implemented that program differently. The school managed that program. In this particular case, we're managing it and nothing, no slide to the school district. It was a different, differently run altogether.
Program.
We, we already have the cameras in dispatch.
Uh huh.
This gets the cameras into the vehicles. That's what we want. Yeah. We've already got an agreement with the district, you know, for that.
Yeah. I just didn't want to see us crossing any First Amendment, Second Amendment.
Oh, no. No, no.
Fourth Amendment.
If you're a resident here, if, if you've got kids or you have grandkids in a Friendswood Independent School District school, this is a game changer.
I like it.
Only took Thad Rohr 30 seconds to go ahead and decide that he wanted to be part of the project. Smart man. Okay, all in favor? Seven, nothing. Proposed resolutions and ordinances. A, consider a resolution adopting a public art display policy. I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Everybody get a chance to read that? All happy? All in favor? Yeah, you can. I was looking at you.
That'd be fast.
That'd be fast. Got places to be.
I will try to speak quickly. I have two questions. One is, there's a word in here where one of the reasons for doing this is for tourism. Can you please strike that?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind. The other is that I, I just wanted to get a little explanation about how Keep Friendswood Beautiful is, is this going to be a subcommittee? Is it going to have new members? How are they going to pick them, that kind of stuff?
Sure. From time to time, our Parks Department is presented with opportunities for art to be donated to the community at some cost or no cost to the city, and it varies per incident. James Tony is our director of Parks and Recreation will have the ability to pump these type of issues to our Keep Friendswood Beautiful Committee, at which point there, per this policy, would be able to establish a subcommittee of their own members, as well as call on some outside expert help from artists in the community before making a recommendation that will ultimately come to this body for approval if it's going to locate the, the piece of art on city-owned property. At the end of the day, art is very subjective. My opinion of what good art is and what, what is not deemed as appropriate art is probably not the same as council member John Scott's. He's anticipating a trophy in his likeness somewhere in a city park someday in the future, and we're, we're working on that.
That's not art.
But.
That's more about promises.
Yes. I will, I will, I will fulfill my promise there.
I still got time to move us back to twice a month.
You do. But this is intended to get folks that have a better vision in that regard than I do or that anybody else does. And the committee, Keep Friendswood Beautiful, has done a spectacular job in beautifying the community on a number of fronts, and we feel that as a committee, they're the best equipped to make those decisions. Our, let me back up, those recommendations to this body for approval.
This was discussed.
Council member Hank.
Thank you. This was discussed at KFE this past week, and James Tony did an excellent job of explaining all this because a lot of those questions that Steve just asked were asked by the committee, too. And it was well received.
But it still has to come back to council for approval.
Correct. Correct.
So that's fine.
Council member Graffon.
I'm done.
You're done. Council member Scott.
And we scratched tourism, right? Scratched tourism? I'm ready.
We're getting rid of tourism.
Item B, consider an ordinance amending the city's general budget for fiscal year 2022-2023 by approving Budget Amendment One and providing for supplemental appropriation and/or transfer of certain funds.
Second.
Council member Scott and Graffon, all in favor? Consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
That's quick.
I can't believe we distracted them.
I didn't want it.
Okay.
Did you want to pull something?
Motion is second. All in favor?